Good evening, everybody. Call the meeting to order, we'll call this.
Barkley?
Here.
Walters? Rorden?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Benner?
Here.
Harton?
Crum?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Bruce? Not yet.
The notification will be given by Pastor Kurt Henson from Hayesville Christian Church.
Mr. Mayor. Gracious Father, we come before you tonight in the season of Thanksgiving and of gift-giving, and we do thank you for the greatest gift of all, the offer of the forgiveness of sins and life through your Son, Jesus Christ. Come tonight and I lift up Mayor Kessler and his family with the recent loss of his mother and father-in-law, just pray for strength and comfort for them during this season. Thank you for Councilman Barkley and the time that he spent serving our city. And I lift up tonight incoming Councilman Brewster. And just thank you also now for him just wanting to serve our community in this way. And I thank you for all those represented here tonight. My prayer is for our whole city, that every home, every house, would just be filled with love and the peace and the joy of not just this season, but what is offered to us every day through your Son, Jesus Christ, in whose name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a special order of business. We have several employee service recognitions tonight. So I will be reading the name, when they started, how many years they are being recognized for, and what their current position is. And as I do that, as you hear your name, please come on up to the podium. So the first one, Jeremiah Willis. Eleven-four, two thousand eighteen, five years, serving as a master police officer. Master Police Officer JD Willis began his career in law enforcement as a detention deputy with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Department. In October two thousand eighteen, he came to the Hayesville Police Department. After graduating from the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, he returned to complete his field training. He has been assigned as a patrol officer, a school resource officer, and most recently, a master police officer. Probably tell some who are not here tonight that I still want to read this and let everybody know and recognize them. Jonathan Mar. October first, two thousand eighteen, five years, master police officer. Master Police Officer Jonathan Mar began his career in law enforcement in two thousand sixteen, working in Schuler, Nebraska. After moving to Kansas, he started working for the Hayesville Police Department. In October of two thousand eighteen, he has worked as a patrol officer on various shifts over the last couple of years. He currently holds the rank of master police officer and is assigned to our investigation section. Whitney Hulse. September twelfth, two thousand eighteen, five years, records clerk. Whitney is a records clerk for the police department. She began working for the police department in September of two thousand eighteen. Her duties include answering phone calls from citizens and attorneys requesting records. She also helps officers and other city staff members needing to find information here at the station. She has worked all shifts and also helps train new records clerks as they are hired and start their new careers. Nancy Bernardo. July first, two thousand eighteen, five years, utility billing clerk. So Nancy started working with the city of Hayesville as a part-time office clerk in March of two thousand seventeen. On July first, two thousand eighteen, she was promoted to the full-time bookkeeping assistant position. And on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, was promoted to the position of utility billing clerk. Nancy's duties include preparing and reviewing monthly billing, handling customer inquiries, reviewing water accounts, forwarding deliquent accounts to the collection agency, and processing payments. Shortly after taking on the utility billing clerk position, Nancy assisted with the utility software conversion, which included many hours of training, working with analysts, and verifying data accuracy while still learning the duties of her position and handling daily tasks. Nancy's ability to adapt to changes and her reliability make her an invaluable employee. Nancy has a son, Gentry. Jill Ward. July first, two thousand eighteen, five years, program supervisor. Jill Ward actually started with the city way back in the late nineteen hundreds. Nineteen ninety-eight. Starting at the Hayesville pool as a lifeguard and teaching swim lessons. She then became the pool manager in two thousand. And every summer after, you can find her on the pool deck. In two thousand eighteen, Jill went full-time to Hayesville Recreation as a program supervisor, still overseeing the pool in the summer as well as operating the recreation department's latchkey program during the school year. Jill's tireless efforts with the latchkey programs provides after-school and out-of-school care for close to five hundred elementary kids each school year. Between her lifeguard and her latchkey staff, Jill manages seventy-plus part-time staff each year. Jill has been married to her husband Cory for thirty years. She has two daughters and three grandchildren. Jill is a major asset to the recreation department. Kristen McDaniel. April eighth, two thousand eighteen, five years, Director of Senior Services and Transportation. Kristen was born and raised in Hayesville. She worked for ten years as a private-duty caregiver before starting with the city. Her passion has always been caring for seniors. She began working for the city in April of two thousand eighteen as a senior center assistant. She was promoted to Director of Senior Services and Transportation in July of two thousand twenty-two. Kristen says the best part of her job is helping seniors that don't have family to navigate the pros and cons of aging. Kristen has been married to her husband Anthony for eight years, and together they have a three-year-old son, Jackson. Michael McRoy. May sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, ten years, heavy equipment operator. Mike was hired on May sixth, two thousand thirteen, as a heavy equipment operator. Mike, who previously served as chief of police for over thirty-three years, transitioned to a role in public works where he has continued to excel over the past ten years. His commitment to public service has left a permanent mark on our city, showcasing adaptability and dedication. What sets Mike apart is not just the skills in public works, but his genuine appreciation for the camaraderie among his coworkers. Mike's favorite aspect of his role is a strong sense of teamwork fostered among his coworkers. We express our sincere appreciation for his ten years of service in the Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Hickey. March fourth, two thousand thirteen, ten years, master police officer. Master Police Officer Justin started his career in law enforcement in two thousand two with the Scotts Police Department in Nebraska. He began working for the Hayesville Police Department in two thousand thirteen. During his tenure, he worked as patrol officer, a school resource officer, and is currently assigned to the investigation section as a detective. In his spare time, he enjoys spending time with his family. Kyle Lyons. January seventh, two thousand thirteen, ten years, water operator one. Kyle was hired on January seventh, two thousand thirteen, as a meter reader. On April thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, Kyle was promoted to water operator class one. Kyle is driven by the profound sense of purpose in providing a safe and reliable water system to the community. In his crucial role, he contributes significantly to the well-being of our residents. We express our sincere appreciation for Kyle's ten years of service and his integral role in maintaining the quality and efficiency of our water system.
Thank you.
Jonathan Simons. October sixth, two thousand eight, fifteen years, street superintendent. John was hired on August twenty-seventh, two thousand eight, as a temporary park worker. His dedication and performance led to a promotion to street superintendent in May of two thousand fifteen. Throughout his tenure, Jonathan has been pivotal in ensuring the efficiency and upkeep of our city streets. Notably, his helpful and instrumental contributions extend beyond the streets in demonstrating his commitment to various facets of our community. We express our appreciation for his fifteen years of commitment, anticipating many more years of collaborative achievements. Levi Brewer. August twenty-fourth, two thousand eight, fifteen years, water superintendent. Levi was hired on August twenty-fourth, two thousand eight, as a full-time general maintenance worker with the park department. He then transferred to the water department as a meter reader. Levi obtained his water operator certifications up to class four, which is the highest certification attainable. He has now been the water superintendent for eight years. Levi finds fulfillment in the diversity of his daily work, navigating various aspects of water management, whether it's overseeing operations or utilizing his certifications. Levi's commitment to maintaining a safe and efficient water system for our community is unwavering.
Thank you.
Grady Germany. May twelfth, two thousand eight, fifteen years, sergeant. Sergeant Grady Germany began his law enforcement career in two thousand in Greenville, Mississippi Police Department. Grady began working for the Hayesville Police Department in two thousand five. Between two thousand seven and two thousand eight, he temporarily left to work with the International Police in Afghanistan. In April of two thousand eight, he returned to Hayesville. And during his time with our department, he has served our community as a patrol officer, school resource officer, master police officer, and in our communication section. He is currently assigned as a sergeant on night shift. Grady is married to his wife Brandy, and they have three children. Terry Sanders. March twenty-fourth, two thousand eight, fifteen years, assistant city clerk. Terry began her employment with the city of Hayesville on March twenty-fourth, two thousand eight, as a bookkeeper assistant in the clerks department. She was promoted to assistant city clerk on March fourth, two thousand twelve. Terry's duties include all aspects of payroll, tax preparation and payment, processing the forms for new hires, conducting exit interviews for most departments, and coordinating benefits for employees. Recently, Terry assisted with the conversion of our payroll software, which included many hours of training, working with analysts, and verifying data accuracy, while still completing her normal tasks. Terry's attention to detail and work ethic makes Terry an asset to the city of Hayesville. Terry is married to Dell, and they have a son, Bryce, and three grandchildren. All right, the next one I'm going to read, and I'll step on up here. So William Black. March tenth, two thousand eight, fifteen years, chief administrative officer. Will was hired as a comptroller for the city of Hayesville on March tenth, two thousand eight, in the city clerk department. On April first, two thousand twelve, Will was promoted to deputy administrative officer in the administrative services department. Will was promoted to chief administrative officer December thirteenth, two thousand twelve, where he works with the mayor to achieve the goals of the city as budget allows. Will is married to Constance, and they have a daughter Grace and three sons, Brent, Luke, and James. Tony Martinez. February fourth, two thousand eight, fifteen years, public works director. Tony was hired on February fourth, two thousand eight, as a wastewater operator trainee. Over the years, Tony's commitment and expertise have been instrumental in the growth and well-being of our community. Tony finds fulfillment assisting the residents of Hayesville with often technical issues, showcasing a dedication to their needs. We thank Tony for his fifteen years of service and anticipate a continued success in achieving the city's goals under his leadership. Next we have Chad Bills. June eighteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, twenty-five years, city inspector. Chad began his career with the city in the summer of nineteen ninety-eight and holds a special connection to the period post the nineteen ninety-nine tornado, witnessing the chaos and destruction that affected our city. His enduring dedication as city inspector has played a vital role in recovery and growth. Chad has been instrumental in ensuring that homes and businesses adhere to building code. We extend our gratitude for his quarter-century commitment and anticipate continued success in the years ahead.
I appreciate it.
So I want to thank all the city employees. There are a lot of service recognitions that I handed out tonight. It just shows that, you know, these people, you know, the employees make Hayesville their home for the work and just their work ethic. And we just love having you here in the city. You guys all do an outstanding job and appreciate all of you. All right, next we have presentation and approval of minutes, A, Minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to approve the minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have administration of oath of office, but Mike to say a couple words first. So DJ. Where's the camera? It's up there. There's Bruce. So I just want to recognize you as you're coming to the end of your term and appreciate the time you've been on board with us and really appreciate everything you've done for the city of Hayesville.
Councilman Brewster. And then if I can also have Thompson and Rorden stand, please. We'll do your oath of office and then but please raise your right hand and say, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Kansas
and the Constitution of Kansas.
and faithfully discharge the duties
and faithfully discharge the duties
of the office of councilmember
of the office of councilmember.
now state your warrant, please.
Warrant three.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right.
Thank you, DJ.
Congratulations, folks returning, and to Councilman Brewster. All right, next we have item one, citizens to be heard. We have none on the schedule tonight. Item two, approval of licenses and bonds, A, cereal malt beverage license renewal. Councilman Crum?
I make a motion, we approve the malt beverage license for cash savings.
Take it. We have a motion of a second to approve the cereal malt beverages beverage license renewal as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Yes.
Next we have item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. A, an ordinance adopting the codification of ordinances with the city of Hayesville, Kansas, providing for the repeal of certain other ordinances not included therein, accepting certain ordinances from repeal and saving certain accrued rights and liabilities. So do the councilmembers have any questions? If still the department heads or people can answer them, if not, we entertain a motion for approval. Councilman Crum?
I make a motion, we approve the ordinance adopting the codification of ordinances of the city of Hayesville, Kansas, providing for the repeal of certain other ordinances not including therein, accepting certain ordinances from repeal and saving certain accrued rights and liabilities.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to approve the ordinance as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
All right, next we have item B, resolution to establish the official city newspaper of the city of Hayesville, Kansas, pursuant to charter ordinance number twenty-nine. Josh?
Good evening. Back in September, if you'll remember, the governing body passed a new charter ordinance that allowed you to designate by resolution from time to time the official city newspaper. One of those options would be to designate the city website as the official newspaper for legal publications. During that discussion, though, at that meeting, a number of folks on the governing body wanted to continue publication in the actual newspaper for folks that may not be able to have access to the website to see publication. So in front of you is a resolution that would designate the city website as the official city newspaper for publication purposes. Then I've also put in there a subsection that says that any legal publication required to be published on the website, that staff will also publish that in the sometimes. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Councilman Crum?
I didn't have any questions, I just wanted to thank you for doing that. And I did run this by Travis, just to see if he knew what was coming up. And he was very happy about it, too. He thought that that was a great thing, and he wanted to let you know and the city know that he appreciates that we worked it that way. Thanks. With that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the resolution to establish the official city newspaper of the city of Hayesville, Kansas, pursuant to charter ordinance number twenty-nine as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to approve the resolution to establish the official city newspaper of the city of Hayesville, Kansas, pursuant to charter ordinance number twenty-nine. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Rorden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have item four, notices and communications, A, governing body announcements. Councilman Crum?
Stuff going on at the library on December thirteenth, from four-thirty to seven-thirty, they are having a Polar Express pajama party. And kids are invited to come out, and they're going to read the story and watch the movie along with doing some other activities. So it has a pajama party from four-thirty to seven-thirty on the thirteenth at the library. Then on the fourteenth, there's another, parents and its teachers sing and rhyme storytime. On the twentieth will be that, four P M is the next Lego club meeting. The open house for Christmas at the library is December twenty-second, and that's from ten A M to three P M. There'll be some activities going on then. There's also a, they're raffling on a quilt that the quilter ladies have done, and that raffle will be, they'll be drawing that one on the twenty-second at two P M. The library will be closed on December twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth for Christmas, but they will be open again on the twenty-sixth. At four P M is the next Know Your Roll, which is a live, I was going to remember.
Roll playing.
Work thing, yes. And that's on the twenty-seventh at four o'clock. And then, of course, the quilters meet in the community room on Monday and Thursday in the morning, and the knitting and crochet groups meet on Tuesday afternoon. And also want to remind, school's got a pretty big break for Christmas this year. They're going to be out from the eighteenth until after the first of the year. And for those parents out there that aren't sure, the library hours are nine to five on Monday, or nine to seven on Monday through Thursday, and then on Saturday, on Friday and Saturday, they are open from ten to five. And then they're closed on Sunday, but there's lots of activities there for the kids to do at the library if you're looking for things to do over Christmas break. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. The other councilmembers have announcements? If not, you should have, the fire station report. Do that on your desk. Came in too late to put it in the packet. For the senior center announcements, some upcoming events, home health care presentation will be tomorrow, Tuesday, December twelfth at nine-thirty A M. Commodities, Wednesday, December fourteenth at one P M. dementia presentation, Thursday, December fourteenth at twelve-thirty P M. Alheimers support group, Thursday, December fourteenth at two P M. Christmas card bingo, Wednesday, December twentieth at twelve-thirty P M. The twenty-twenty-four five-dollar memberships will be due in January, so January, go on out. Get your membership, five dollars. If you're fifty-five plus, great time, very cheap membership for a great organization. Some recurring programs at the senior center, Domino's, Donuts, Cherry Yoga, Bellards, Bingo, Funko, Steps, Cards, Drumming, Well Rep, Let's Groove, Writing Class, and Crafting Club. Some of the hustle numbers for October of twenty-twenty-three. See, one-way riders, two-hundred-and-fifty-three, new register riders, four. Come back up to the front again. So there is a program for the city clerks and municipal finance officers association. They have a Kansas-certified municipal clerk state certification program. It's a lot of words in there. So this is administered through D V S U. This program was created specifically for Kansas municipal clerks. So this program is to sponsor continuing education and develop both the proficiency and the quality of municipal clerks' service in our communities and throughout the state of Kansas. So Angie just recently completed this program, a four-year program, right? So this is her plaque, it was your I appreciate it, and all your dedication and hard work to achieve this. So I know a lot of other cities do not have the certification. Thank you.
Speech?
Speech, yeah.
You surprised me, I couldn't prepare.
All right, next we have B, memo regarding new business license. All right, no, I still require, great. C, item C, the KDOT cost sharing program award letter. Did that have the sidewalk correct? So that was a, that was a good program. We've been trying for, I believe this was our fourth time, trying to get a, you know, when I came in office, there were like four sidewalks, so I wanted to make sure they got done, you know, for safety, and this was one of them, to go down Broadway, all the way from the bridge down to the, I believe it's Berlin Road. So it's a big improvement, a big improvement in our city. So we have the email from Cox Communications and a memo regarding utility billing account write-offs. Item five, old business. A, consideration of Wheatland Village additional final plat.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On Thursday, November 9th, the planning commission held a second review of the Wheatland Village final plat. Changes include development of the west side of the property, increasing the number of single-family lots from 97 to 131 lots, and decreasing the number of duplexes from 49 to 46 lots. Previously, a large portion of the west side of the property was all reserved. The planning commission is recommending approval of this and is now before you for your consideration and applicants for the agents here answering questions you may have.
Council have any questions? Councilman Crum?
Chief, I noticed on your guys' comments on it, you talked about having street names that were different. The way it's all platted out right now, that's the way they have it, isn't it? All the circles have different names? Is that what you wanted?
That's correct. We wanted it to be differentiated in there without just being a hundred block or whatever.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's what I thought, that that's what I was seeing, I just wanted to make sure.
Correct, yep.
Any further questions? Councilman Benner?
Make a motion, we approve the consideration of Wheatland Village Final Edition plat.
Second.
I didn't say that right, did I? Wheatland Village Edition Final Plat.
All right.
Second.
So a motion of a second to approve the Wheatland Village Edition Final Plat. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, item six, other business. A, public hearing for consideration of approval of the proposed amendment to the 2023 budget. Of a public hearing script I will be reading. So we now formally open the public hearing on the proposed 2023 budget amendment. Do any members of the audience wish to speak concerning the proposed budget amendment? Seeing none? If there are no other members of the audience wishing to speak concerning the budget amendment, I now formally close the public hearing for the proposed 2023 budget amendment. Council, have any discussion? If thought I would entertain a motion on the proposed 2023 budget amendment. Councilman Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the proposed amendment to the 2023 budget as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of a second for the, to approve the proposed amendment to the 2023 budget. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next we have B, consideration of playground equipment for Rigs Park. George.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the November and December park board meetings, the committee reviewed several proposals for the front design of Rigs Park, or remodel of it. With that, they have selected Great Southern Recreation to, for their design. This would include installation of the playground equipment, the playground equipment, and then surfacing. They would like to try port-in-place surfacing for this. All the other parks have the wood fiber. Since this is one of our high-traffic parks, they would like to try this at this park and see how it works for us. It'll take about 12 weeks once we order. I'm trying to have this completed by partying those 6:00 in April. There is three photos of the design. What was in the packet, I didn't have quite the rendering of what we were looking at possibly doing with the port-in-place. So you can see these designs up here. This is for five to 12-year-olds. Can try to answer any other questions you might have.
Councilman Crum?
Port-in-place surfacing, what is it?
That's the rubber. When you go to some of the parks, you have the turf or the rubber base is the four inches of the rubber material. It's not the loose fill, it's the slot that you walk on it, it's like squishy.
Okay.
So.
And the bid we're looking at wasn't the low bid, but we also don't know what the other ones were doing. And the 62 is on top of
Yeah, the total price that they're looking at contracting with Great Southern is $303,669. The price of the equipment installation and everything is $249,690. The other ones, they would be looking, they would have been a wood fiber. So we changed Great Southern's first price at $249, doesn't include any surfacing. The surfacing that they selected was a port-in-place.
So why did we end up going with a $249 instead of a 206 or a 227?
It's really hard to compare playgrounds to playgrounds. You can tell them that you want a price range and the, I want a spin feature, I want a swing feature, and they give you proposals, but I can't. This playground isn't exactly what they give me, and it's just different prices from different vendors. Great Southern is a different vendor that we haven't used before. They were primarily in Missouri, they branched out to Kansas, had a lot of good recommendations. Looking at designs, some of the other ones just weren't as appealing for what the park board wanted. We did look at, in November, we looked at a couple of designs. We revamped them, sent them back, and they did send us, and that's what they chose, so.
Okay, so everybody just sent in a different rendering of what they thought they would be, and this was just the one that they thought would be best?
Yeah, and I mean, playground equipment, I refer to it a lot like cars. You have more expensive ones, you have cheaper ones. Warranty and stuff is a little bit different. Sometimes it holds up better than others, it just, you never know.
Do they have any kind of a guarantee with it?
It has warranty, but it doesn't have a guarantee that it's not going to fade or anything like that, no.
Do you know if the, if the port-in-place has any kind of a warranty with it?
There is some warranty with it as far as work and everything like that. Port-in-place is a lifetime expectancy of, at max, 10 years. There is spots that like in the slides or where areas where the kids go a lot that may have to be, those sections replace after five years, so. And if you go to other parks, you can kind of see that if you've been to those. I don't know if you've been to any in a while, but
Not in a while.
Yeah. So at Dorner and I think at the Hack Park, too, it wasn't the lowest bid that we selected. They went by design. I know for sure Dorner was.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Ward?
One of the questions I had, and you may have touched on it, but I know the playground equipment we have over there, okay? Junior High lets out. That becomes target for all the bigger kids to get on there, and they totally destroyed it. I don't know how many times have we fixed it. Is this stuff any better?
I can't say that it's any better. I mean, everything is subject to vandalism. I can't prevent that. I don't think we should not build something for the kids to use in a very public park and it's a very high-traffic park because of the junior high kids going over there. And we do have cameras. Everything is breakable, so I can't say that it's not going to be vandalized, there is always that chance.
Okay.
So most of the thing they like to vandalize is the restrooms. Sometimes they like to Sharpie on playground equipment, for the most part, it's the restrooms that they like to have fun in.
Councilman Benner?
Does this price take into account any demo or hauling off the old equipment or anything like that?
Public Works, as typical of our install, remove the old equipment and the mulch, level the site for us for installation. That's what we did at Country Lake, that's what we did at Plagans Carpenter. That's typical for what we do to save money on those. If we did have them do that, that would do additional cost.
Councilman Crum?
If there's any more discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the deal for the, with Great Southern Recreation for the playground equipment for a total of $303,669.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to approve the playground equipment for Rigs Park as presented. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next we have item C, consideration of agreement for public defender services. There's a memo on your packet. What would council like to do? Councilman Benner?
We make a motion, we approve the agreement with Mr. Lautz for public defender agreement.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to approve the agreement for public defender services. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have item seven, department reports. A, administrative services. George.
I don't have anything.
City clerk, Angie?
Just like to announce some city closings. We'll be closed December 25th and 26th for the Christmas holiday. And then again on January 1st for New Year's. You can call 529-5912 if there are any water or sewer emergencies. And then I just wanted to remind everyone again that the final meeting will be Thursday, December 28th, and we will be meeting at 6 o'clock. So please mark your calendar. Thank you.
Yes. All right, next we have police. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to introduce our visiting officer tonight is Lieutenant Malcolm Young. He's in charge of our investigation section, so say hi to him as you go by out there. Also with the holidays coming up and everybody getting together for one thing or another, just make sure that we're designated drivers, don't drink and drive, don't take that risk. You can mess up everybody's holiday, so make sure of being mindful of that, and that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Public Works, Tony?
Good evening. I just wanted to provide a quick update on the D-21 project over by 79th and Meridian. Progress continues to be made even despite the snow we had a few weeks ago. You can see in the pictures now the lakes or ponds are starting to be defined with the riprap rock around them, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have recreation. Rob?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Hayesville Activity Center will be closed on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day and on New Year's Day.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Next we have item eight, appointments. We have none tonight. Item nine, agenda citizens to be heard. We have any citizens that would like to speak tonight? None? All right, moving along. Item 10, executive session. We have none scheduled. Item 11, review of expenditures. A, summary of November expenditures.
I need to receive and file the November expenditures.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to receive and file the November expenditures. Any discussion? Question, please.
Brewster?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have item 12, the consent agenda. Councilman Thompson?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Question, please?
Brewster?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Next we have item 13, council items. A, council concerns. What kind of concerns do you have tonight? Councilman Crum?
No concerns, but I just wanted to, again, kind of point out what we did at the beginning of it, where we had all these. I think what you see is you see long-term city employees, and I think that's because we've worked well with them. The city has tried to make sure we keep their pay up to par and tried to work with them. But they do, I think a lot of them stay here, too, also just because they love the city. If you interact with them, they've almost always got a smile on their face. And a lot of that also has to do with, with our leadership in our department heads. So I just wanted to, appreciation to all the department heads and then everybody that was recognized tonight as well as everybody that's been here and continue to be here and do a good job for the city.
Thank you, yeah, totally agree. The other council members, like saying that? Councilman Brewster?
I'm good right now. Thanks, sir.
All right, next we have item B, council action request updates.
I think we have one more meeting with maybe the same update on this one, but 7106 South Broadway is scheduled for jury trial at Cedric County District Court on January 29th, 2024. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item 14, adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. Any discussion? Question, please?
Brewster?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Benner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.